Let the record reflect, we have reconvened with all members present. Council President Carmella Vitale and Councilman Walkowitz are excused tonight. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have a motion for the executive minutes of August 14th, 2017?
So moved.
Second. Already discussed an executive, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion for executive minutes of September 11th, 2017?
So moved.
Second. And previously discussed, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And a motion for regular minutes of September 11th, 2017?
So moved.
Second.
We had corrections at our places, any other discussion or corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Welcome all, and welcome to the August we didn't have, and now we have it in September, so it's always, can't trust the calendar anymore, can you? I want to do a little welcome for two in the audience, our civic scholars from Duke University, Matt Gronert and Emma McAfee. You want to stand up and wave? You'll probably recognize them having been at the farmer's market, but please, in the next few weeks, or the end of October, you will see them there, and so say hello, but they will be helping out in Borough Hall as part of the Civic Scholar Program in Madison. A few updates and a few presentations. Last week ago Friday, on September 15th, Council President Carmella Vitale and I went to visit Agnes Muncing, presented with a proclamation in advance of her 100th birthday on September 17th. And Reggie Jackson had to hit a lot of home runs to have a candy bar, and Agnes reached 100, and so she has official Agnes Muncing Candy Bar with a few facts of 1917, gas was eight cents a gallon, average income $6.87 for men, $343 annual for women, and all sorts of interesting things. New house would have cost you $3,200 100 years ago, but so it was nice to celebrate her birthday. Also, under the leadership of Dan Blank and Barb Short, and also sponsored by Short Stories, Investors Bank, and the DDC, kicked off the Second Annual Storytellers Festival, and that was a week ago Saturday. It was a great festival with events and workshops for all ages, and Curious George was even there, and thankfully, the man in yellow must have been keeping it under control because we had no surprises. One of the neat things at the festival, for those that might have had a chance or missed it, was the storyboard, and I'm going to just pull up one of the great little notes that a young Madison resident wrote. Just one second there, oops. I can't find it quickly, oh, there you go. So what they challenged those that attended the festival was to write a short story about someone that was important in your life. And so this young Madison resident wrote, "If you have a little brother or sister, you will notice that he or she is your best friend. Sometimes you will forget, and that is okay." I thought that was very good advice. But I also want to share the story I did tell at the beginning of the festival, because I think it was important, of the person that made a major impact in my life, and that was the story of Bill Hawkins, former CEO of the Madison area YMCA, who believed in me, gave me my first Y professional position, gave me the kick I needed to get my bachelor's degree, but more importantly, guided me through my early career and demonstrated leadership skills that I emulate today. Bill died on August 30th last month, so we've lost a great person. Also, on this past weekend, I was in Chatham along with Governor Cody as we were at the Out of Darkness Walk, and this was raising awareness and raising over $60,000 for suicide prevention. And I want to give special recognition to Chatham Borough Councilman Len Resto through sharing his story about being saved from the edge of suicide, not only raised the most amount of money through pledges, but also served as a reminder of the great lives that can be saved through suicide awareness and strong mental health programs. So I really thank Len Resto for stepping out there and doing that. And then also, I ran home, got changed, and went to the Museum of Early Trades and Crafts for a benefit, where I got to serve as the guest auctioneer, and they were able to raise over $10,000 to make their programs available to needy school districts, seniors, and special needs programs, so a very great event. And now, I'm going to come on down and provide some, a couple of proclamations and a couple of presentations. I think we have our legislative team waiting at the door, come on, come on in. Governor Cody, Assemblyman John McKeon, Assemblywoman Myla Jaycee. As the saying goes, they're not manufacturing any new land anymore, so it is important that we preserve what we have. And if you look at the development on Park Avenue, the pavement covering Aquifer, the traffic affecting her quality of life, it is a reminder that it could have been even worse. We could have two new office buildings at the Ridgedale end of that property if it wasn't for the open space partnership between the borough, the county money, and Green Acres that created the Madison Recreation Center. So not only do we have a beautiful recreation center, but we have preserved open space and helped reduce traffic. That would not be possible without this great partnership and having good friends in Trenton that fight for Green Acres funds that are still coming to us as we pay down the debt. So I think we have a check for our legislative team.
Mayor, thank you for having us here tonight. It's a pleasure to fight for you. Great town, with great people, doing great things. So we present this check to you to do more great things and pay off the debt.
And if you can't see at home, it's a big check with a big number, $500,000, but this is Representative, this is... Makes almost, it makes just over $2 million since 2013, so it's working together with my partners, with the governor, and with Assemblywoman Jaycee. It is our pleasure. Myla?
And I, excuse me, I want to congratulate Madison and the mayor and the council and everyone who works with him to make it such a beautiful welcoming place, and we'll see you at Bottle Hill Day.
Thank you very much. Where's Carmella?
Carmella's home recovering.
Okay. This mayor here works them hard, so...
Good seeing you.
Yeah. Thank you, thanks so much. I know. Thanks, John. Yeah, absolutely.
If I could have Tina Jacobs come up, and also representing Taiwan On, Gretchen Coviello, Diane Horn, Grace Lamy, Andrew Woresk, I'm sorry, Anita McAndrew and Suzanne Von Der Lin, they're all, okay. They're all here with us, and yeah. This is a very special proclamation, as we often hear the question asked, "Has your family or yourself personally been touched by cancer?" And virtually every hand goes up in the room. It was 45 years ago I lost my mother to cancer liver. It started as breast cancer. We have made tremendous inroads since that time, 45 years ago, that I believe that she would still be with me if we had raised this awareness and worked so hard in research. So it's a pleasure and a great honor to present this proclamation National Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Whereas October has been designated National Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and whereas the borough of Madison values the health of all its citizens and supports increased public awareness of this disease, its risk factors and symptoms, to help stabilize the women and men across New Jersey, and whereas Tie a Ribbon campaigns sponsored by Susan G. Coleman, North Jersey, and Tie One On campaign promote such awareness as well as remembrance for all those who have been touched by this disease. And whereas the goal of these campaigns is to raise awareness and reach the citizens of Madison. Whereas the borough of Madison will proudly join in the Tie a Ribbon and Tie One On campaigns in Downtown Business District. Now, therefore I, Robert H. Connolly, Mayor of Borough of Madison, on behalf of the governing body hereby proclaim October as National Breast Cancer Awareness Month, to be marked by tying pink ribbons and illuminating trees with pink lights in Downtown Business District for the period of October 1st through October 31st, 2017, for the 2017 Tie a Ribbon and Tie One On campaigns.
I would just like to thank the mayor and actually the YMCA of Madison that has agreed to tie our pink ribbons. These are the pink ribbons that you will be seeing around town for the month of October. It is our goal to make sure that every woman and man that needs to get screened has that ability, no matter what their economic status is, the color of their skin, old, young, whatever. To that end, we raise money all year long, and we give it back to our nine-county service area, which includes Morris County. To date, our little affiliate has invested $18 million into grants to nonprofit organizations to provide screening and diagnostic tests, treatment support for those going through cancer, and we have sent $7 million to Coman National for research. And one day, we hope, we won't have to do that anymore when we find that elusive cure. So thank you so much.
Well, we would like to thank you. This is the 10th year of our very own little grassroots Madison, Tie One On, that started by the group of women trying to figure out a way to help. And we have our ribbons that we sell at Bottle Hill Day, so we'll see you down there, and you'll see them all around town as everybody ties them on the back of their cars. This is our theme this year, Tie One On, It's Personal, 2017, as many of our friends have been touched by this.
And thank Madison for always embracing us as our little group. It's... Okay, thank you.
So I just have a little present for the mayor and the council. I brought some bracelets and some BSA cards, and for these women that know people that have been touched by breast cancer, there's some breast cancer medals. So if you have survivors, feel free to take them, okay?
That would be Carmella.
Right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My wife is a 16-year survivor. I want to catch that.
16-year survivor, double mastectomy, and after her operation, the doctor said to her, "You'll live to see grandchildren." And we had our first three months ago, so... It's no longer a death sentence. God bless you all. Long life. Thank you. We have another proclamation for something that is touching so many families, and it's, you know, I went to a funeral this year for a friend's son. He thought his son had beat the addiction and found him dead in bed on a Saturday morning, and it just brought home the issue of opiates and the importance that we, again, raise awareness and work to fight the abuse and save lives. Whereas New Jersey's in the midst of a life-threatening opiate abuse epidemic, and whereas a Partnership for Drug-Free New Jersey has designated October 6th, 2017, as Knockout Opiate Abuse Day, and whereas this is an initiative with a dual purpose, to educate families of the addictive qualities of opiate pain medicines and their link to heroin abuse rates in New Jersey, and to communicate to physicians information on safer prescribing messages found in the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention Guidelines for prescribing opiates, which include considering other therapies, setting realistic treatment goals with patients, and discussing with patients the pros and cons of opiates. And whereas the State Senate and General Assembly jointly resolve that October 6th shall be permanently designated as Knockout Opiate Abuse Day in New Jersey in order to raise awareness about the dangers of and the link between opiate abuse and heroin addiction, and to educate healthcare providers, community leaders, state lawmakers, and the members of the public about opiate abuse epidemic and its effects throughout the state of New Jersey and across this country. And whereas the Health Department and Madison Alliance Addressing Substance Abuse support initiatives designed to raise awareness about opiate abuse in New Jersey and to take steps to prevent addiction. Now therefore I, Robert H. Connolly, Mayor of Borough of Madison, on behalf of the governing body hereby proclaim October 6th, 2017, as Knockout Opiate Abuse Day in the Borough of Madison.
So on behalf of MASA, the Madison Alliance Addressing Substance Abuse, I'd like to thank you, Mayor Connolly, and the Borough Council for recognizing Knockout Opiate Abuse Day. This is the second year that this effort has taken place, and what this movement means to me is, it's that there's hope. You know, we are faced with an epidemic in the state of New Jersey and across the country, but we are lucky to have an alliance and a coalition that's working very hard to help turn this tide. So the more that people know about the connection between opiate use and abuse and heroin addiction, the faster we can turn this tide, and so when everyone, I'd like everyone to go home, and if you're not familiar with the connection, or you feel like you need to know more, please go online, there's a lot of information. You can Google it on Partnership for Drug-Free New Jersey. We are looking for volunteers for Knockout Opiate Abuse Day, so if you have a half an hour or an hour to help us deliver door knockers in your neighborhood, we would be very grateful. And you can see me after the meeting, but this is, there's a, there's a lot of energy is going into turning this around, and the more people know, and the more people actually step in and help, the faster we can solve this problem.
Thank you so much. Thank you for all the work you do. Public Safety, Mr. Landrigan.
Okay, I have nothing from the Police and Fire Department, however, I do have reports from the Water and Electric Department.
Thank you. Yep, covered for that.
Okay, from the Water Department, water samples were taken for state mandated testing for total coliform, E. coli, volatile organic compounds, as well as stage 2 disinfection byproducts. Additionally, radio transmitters were installed for remote water reading, remote water meter reading. The Madison Water Department Annual Fire Hydrant and Water Main Flushing Program will begin on Tuesday, October 10th, and will last approximately six weeks. During this period, you may experience a temporary loss of water pressure and slight discoloration for a short period of time. If you experience any other problems, please call the Madison Water Department at 973-966-7330. Okay, from the Electric Department, they completed installation of poles and cables on Kings Road for the new housing development. They completed energizing the primary voltage riser poles to service the KRE project. They completed the final year of the three-year substation and maintenance contract, and they installed and programmed two new underground switch motors in the commercial district. Now, as you've probably heard over the past couple of meetings, we've been talking about a new water, a new electric bill. The Electric Department, the administration's been working on this, and I have a sample of it right here. It gives a great amount of detail in regards to what your past usage is, what your current bill is. It's very informative, and I think it meets a lot of the comments that have been voiced, and I think they did a great job with it, and they will continue to work on it. So thank you to them. And that's it, Mayor.
Thank you. Public Works and Engineering, Ms. Bailey.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. Mr. Cody and Mr. Burnett have been working with Mr. Vogel, our engineer, and the other department heads on revising the five-year capital plan. The goal is to follow the same schedule as last year with an initial presentation in December, then the introduction of appropriation ordinances for the roadwork to immediately follow. This will allow for all roads to be packaged as one bid, which makes the projects easier to manage and hopefully reduces the costs and gets them started earlier in the spring. The administration will be coming to the council later in the year with a list of capital ordinances that have been completed that should be canceled. This is done annually, so the funds can be brought back to the Capital Improvement Fund and then appropriated for other projects. On the operating budget front, Mr. Cody and Mr. Burnett are continuing to work with the department heads, as well as the staff from the Madison-Chatham Joint Meeting on developing the 2018 budget. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And Health, and if you have a...
I do.
...Public Works and Engineering, Mr. Rowe.
So I'll start with Carmella's report for Public Works and Engineering, First from Engineering. Sefeli and Son Contracting will be working on the final punchless items for the road reconstruction program for this year, and the Rapid Pump and Meter Company is working on their final punchless items for the North Street Pump Station. They expect to be completed by November 10th. Sampling wells for the environmental remediation contract at the rear of Hartley Dodge were installed last week by Summit Drilling in Mount McDonald, and the Thermo Group has scanned the library roof for defects last week and found that the areas of concern were minor. A construction contract will be awarded this week to a company that's going to be putting up the MRC La Crosse rebound wall, and finally, three grant applications will be submitted to the New Jersey Department of Transportation for projects we hope to undertake next year. From the Public Works Department, they worked on helping with some catch basin and storm pipe blockage at the St. Vincent Cemetery. They replaced the stairs at the skating rink. They replaced the banners on the art poles downtown. They cut and welded a new radiator for the Candlewood Pump Station, and they also helped the police load donations for the hurricane victims, and this is in addition to the extensive amount of items that Ken gave us that they normally do. And finally, for the Health Department, the regular October meeting of the Board of Health has been changed from Tuesday, October 17th, to Thursday, October 12th, at 7:30 at the Madison Health Department, so that's going to be the week before on Thursday rather than Tuesday. At that meeting, the board will be introducing an ordinance that will amend Chapter 218, which includes addressing invasive species. This is to cover the bamboo issue. The Madison Flu Clinic dates are now available on Rosnet under the Health Department's page. And finally, the Health Department will be onsite at Bottle Hill Day performing food inspections of the participating vendors. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. And Community Affairs, Ms. Bur.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had a wonderful report, which you superseded by talking about the Storytellers Festival and the Museum of Early Trades and Crafts Gala. Yeah, I listened. Well, I will add, however, that the mayor authoritarily took the helm of raising money for the Museum of Early Trades and Crafts Scholarship Fund, and this fund allows the museum to bring students in from the inner city to experience, for some of these children, their first time in the suburbs and their first time in a museum. It also allows the educators to take items from the museum to nursing homes. And my aunt has dementia, and I have seen firsthand what can happen when an old item is placed in the hands of a dementia patient. They suddenly come to life because they remember this item. They know what this item does, and for one brief moment, they regain their personality. And it's a wonderful thing to see, and it's a wonderful thing to be able to support, and I thank the mayor for raising quite a few dollars.
Thank you.
That's it.
Communications and petitions.
None received, Mayor.
Okay, this is our first of two invitations for discussion. Again, this one is limited to our items on the discussion agenda or any resolutions that are listed on the consent agenda, so if you want to comment on the Kings Road community space or any of the resolutions, please step up to lectern, state your name, your address, and the item, agenda item you're going to comment on, and please keep your comments to three minutes or less. Again, we'll have another time to speak later, which you can talk on any topic, but right now, it's the agenda discussion and the resolutions. Tom, welcome.
Tom Harlan, Pudus 21, Palmroy Road. I just want to comment on the presentations that you made very briefly. I think it's such a great example that the borough sat with the Green Acres people to get them to realize how important that open space is, and I know that everybody's worked very hard in the borough on the different committees to collaborate with them, and we're competing with a lot of other towns for Green Acres funds, so that's, I guess, an indication of how important it is for the Morris County people to give us a benefit. You said it was $2 million that they've given us?
Through Green, yep, yep, through Green Acres, and so it has allowed us to pay down the debt that we took on for the $13 million purchase, and certainly, it may still stand as the largest grant from the county, open space.
No, there was one, somebody...
Someone, somebody clipped that, but we, you know...
By a little bit.
Yep, but...
But initially, you also got money, grant money from somewhere for the initial acquisition, purchase price, right?
The county.
In place?
From both Green Acres and the county, yes, and which would not have been possible if this town didn't pass our own open space, because they want to see that partnership.
Sure, so we need to remind people that that money has been put to good use also. How much do we actually get from the two organizations, Green Acres and Open Space?
7.3?
$7.3 million. Oh, that's fantastic. Thanks for all your efforts, everybody.
Thank you.
I'm from, I live on Green Avenue, and, Tom, I completely agree about the open space, and it's so important for us as a community. So I want to thank you, Mayor, for bringing in that half a million dollars to Madison. I look carefully at that little check, and it has a picture of the MRC, and so I guess my question would be, the comment, would be that the, I think the land was purchased for about 2.8 million, and the fields were skinned for 1.6, is that correct?
The land was purchased for 13 million, the athletic facility itself was 3.3 million, 3.5 million, so a total of 616. Green Acres funds can only be used for land purchase, and so the $2 million worth of green acres...
Green Acres Funds can only be used for land purchase, and so the $2 million worth of grants we've gotten from the state go for the land-
Land purchase. That's, that's what I wanted to clarify, because as I look specifically at that, that is the land that, the athletic turf fields that many of us in Madison appreciate. And so, so was that $2 million for that land, or is it not? Because sometimes it's really hard to get a sense of where that money's actually going.
The 49 acres includes the turf fields plus the land across the street, which is the passive recreation. So, basically, from where you come from, Ridgedale, all the way down both sides of the road until you hit the gate, and the grassy hill also off to the right.
Okay. And so, the land that that's sitting on, I think the town still owes $2.3 million. Is that correct?
Ah, no, it was, the total purchase, 13 million, so you can't-
I think he wants to know what the remaining amount is-
Actually, what I'd like to know, very specifically, is, is that $500,000 going to pay down the $2.3 million in debt? That'd be one question, because we're paying $70,000 in interest in this year alone to service that debt. So, it's a little confusing, I think, for us, as we hear getting millions of dollars for the, for the MRC complex, and we're not sure exactly where that money's going. So, that'd be one thing. And the other is that we have an outstanding expense of about $1.1 million to reskin the field. So, as an athletic facility, as it's being used, like a pair of running shoes gets used, you have to replace those. And it's great that they're being used, and I'm just not quite clear if that, because I looked at the picture there, and I'm just asking, I'm just following up on Tom, because it's a very important thing that the community enjoys. I was just wondering if that $500,000 is actually going to those athletic fields or to a bigger, bigger number?
No.
It only, it, let's, yeah-
Yeah, so maybe it's a bigger project.
Only going to the land purchase, so paid out the principal in the land.
So, it's not just the land that that's sitting on, but another larger-
The whole 49 acres.
Okay, because it's a little confusing for the, as I talk to people, it's a little confusing as to exactly where the, where the money's going to. So, I just want to follow up on Tom's things.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to comment anything on the agenda? Seeing none, I close this part of the meeting, and we move on to agenda discussions. Jim, you're up, sorry.
Thank you, Mayor.
Pause for a commercial.
That's okay. Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to give council a short update on the KRE, Community Arts Space, which is over off Kings Road. And so, just bear with me here a minute. This developer selection process involved many aspects during the RFP process, and one where developers could earn points during a selection process was if the borough received a public amenity. In addition to paying the highest price, KRE's public amenity offering was compelling in that they offered a 3,000-square-foot indoor space and a 16,000-square-foot public realm. So, the public realm space is the area in front here, which includes a stage and includes a gathering space. And then, as you can see here, this is slightly different, there's not a retail space there. This entire area here is going to be the community space, so that's going to be this awning, this awning, and this doorway here. And that space will be available as a cultural and economic space for the downtown, and really, an economic engine for the downtown, attracting customers in shops, customers to the shops and restaurants. Administration has been working with the architects, professionals, arts volunteers, and stakeholders on the design and functionality of the space. The following images are architectural renderings of what the space will look like when it's complete. So, again, here's the space here, and we're going to focus on this area here. Going to the renderings, this is the front, those three doors. These doors here can completely fold open, which will connect the inside space to the outside space. So, when you're inside, you can get outside, when you're outside, you can get inside. And there's a picture of it inside, so that would flow right out into the open space. So, if we had an event, the event could be both indoor and outdoor. And that was important to make sure that there was strong connectivity between the two spaces. In terms of program, programming for this space, it's a flexible open space that allows for many different uses. We'll go into specifics, but this just gives you an example of how there could be seating for up to 100 people in a theatrical performance that would almost be a performance in the round here. Here it is without those, without those chairs in it. So, when we get to the actual space, I think it's important to note a couple of things in the design. We worked with John Patrowski, Deb Starker, Mike Copas, and others on this design, along with Dean Marketo. It, it gives flexibility to the space. This area here, apologize, where'd my little red thing go? This area here is storage. This area here is storage, along with either offices, dressing rooms, depending multi-use space. There's storage here. We made sure the bathrooms were big enough for capacity of over 100 people, with a handicap bathroom, a men's and ladies lavatory. And, and we set this up in such a way, put outlets in the floor, and did all sorts of things to make it kind of usable in many different ways. Temporary partitions could be put inside for artwork, which could be illuminated through the outlets in the floor and alike. There's separation between the bathroom and the main space. Obviously, if this were to be used for a theater, where you wouldn't want people walking in and out of the bathroom and bothering them. The center area is prepped for a sprung floor. A sprung floor is something that's important. Actors demand it in actors' equity union contracts, that they're not standing right on hard concrete. It's prepped for it, but there would need to be additional fundraising that would be done by the theater groups if that were to be installed as a, as a professional sprung floor. What's also important when we did this design was to make sure that we had this connectivity. This space over here, all the way going around the building, will be that restaurant space. The restaurant, we have not heard any confirmation from the developer on what the restaurant is. I know there's plenty of people making guesses on, all, all through town. I didn't want to, just want to be clear, we haven't heard of any names. But the opportunity to, when the restaurant is selected, is to talk to them and say, "Hey, let's have a doorway," kind of like a doorway in a, in a hotel, where if we open it and you open it, there can be flow back and forth. That way, someone comes into the restaurant, they want to go into the public art space, or if it happens to be catering or anything that would be going on, customers waiting for a table, that, they could all flow back and forth in between the two spaces. So, that was really important in the design. You can actually see in there that they initially had planned on having a column right in the middle, so we worked with them and had those columns moved to make it a completely open center space. The lease language that we have, we have multiple agreements with the developer. We have the redevelopers agreement, we have the pilot, and we also have an actual lease for this space. The lease is for a dollar a year for 30 years, so can't, can't beat the price, and it's for 30 years. The borough is responsible for utilities and for the renovations above and beyond the plain vanilla box, but the lease language I just wanted to go over, it specifically says, "The indoor area and to the extent used activities for sponsored by the borough, the public realm area," so that's the outdoor stage area, "shall be used by the borough for public displays of art, theatrical or similar artistic performances, farmers market, short-term retail use subject to landlord's approval, pop-up art galleries, or other arts crafts events, any of which may include temporary sale of ancillary food or other goods by community arts groups based in Madison, and any other community use approved by the borough." So, that gives you an indication as to what some of the uses are. In talking with Deb Starker, MACA, DDC, and other organizations, these are some of the uses. The first one is always my favorite, and I know the people in Drew University, I might drive it, drive them a little crazy with this, but Drew University, FDU, and the College of St. Elizabeth all have the same company, that is their bookstore. And if you go to other towns, you go to where Virginia Tech is, you go to Hanover, New Hampshire, or Dartmouth Colleges, there's actually a college store in the downtown. So, we could have a pop-up retail store in the downtown, that would be a Drew Fairleigh-FDU College store. We could offer to them relatively for free during the holidays. That's one option. We could have an indoor farmers market, summer drama program, community meeting space, a movie theater space. Perhaps a group of residents wanted to create a space, purchase the necessary equipment and some blackout curtains for the front windows to actually have movies there. There's no reason why you couldn't have movies with up to 100 people there. It can be programmed and reprogrammed that space as needed. Glyphs is a high school club, and they often do coffee houses with musical performances and arts performances and poetry readings. The Garden Club may want it for a show. The Chamber does a home expo show, where they bring in vendors from Madison area to talk about home improvements. The Shakespeare Theater may want to use it, Playwrights Theater may want to use it. I think most people know the library has another renovation project that's coming up at some point. If we're able to obtain funds, that renovation project may happen all at once, which would close the library. This could be used as a temporary, you know, satellite for the library. Art gallery, theatrical performance, summer concert series could be performed outside, lectures and classes, school district art show. I don't know any, but people had kids in the high school and junior school, they have a wonderful art show, and they haven't had it in Madison for years. It could be in Madison and could be in that location. The Sanctuary Concert Series refers to, I think it's the Long Hill Chapel, had a fabulous concert series over there, similar to the downtown concert series, that had more name-oriented musicians. So, that concert series is gone, so this could take its place. It could be used for training or not-for-profit workshops. MACA has the Wonderful Holiday Arts Festival, which we all know, the day after Thanksgiving, and then, of course, Playwrights Theater. In certain cases, fundraising will be required and expected for certain uses, as I talked about, the movie theater, for Playwrights Theater, or for any use for theater equipment whatsoever. So, the next steps that administration is working on is, we're working on continuing to reach out to the various stakeholder groups for input and make sure that the space is ready. In terms of management, we've talked about this a little bit with council, but we want to just reiterate that we're presuming that the Director of Business Development, which is a position that's been advertised for the borough, will manage the use of the space and develop an operations plan and a scheduling process. Our goal is to maximize the use of the space, but not maximize that person's time and energy into that. Revenue, there's certainly opportunities to look for possible revenue streams to offset the utility and maintenance costs. For example, if we go to the Playwrights Theater and they decide to take it for six weeks, I think there would be an expectation that they would pay a rent. Uses, we've talked about some uses here, but we need to start to identify partnerships and additional uses. And the goal, as I briefly touched on, is to maximize the use of the space and the economic and cultural benefits it will bring to Madison. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
So, just a quick little overview, the people go down Kings Road, and right now, you do have to use your imagination to envision this final product that, you know, the building is 60 feet back from the curb on Kings Road, providing that community, outdoor community space, and the fact, as Jim mentioned, the ability to open those doors, the windows up to make it a indoor/outdoor space in the right time of the year, and the, you know, really, as you look at that picture, the great, you know, stage area, and just a great focal point. Yeah, Maureen?
So, Jim, you, you mentioned using it as a movie theater. Is it, is a projection system included?
No, we would, that would be one of the fundraising things that would be needed, were curtains and a projection system. There are lots of different models. Maybe there's a group that wants to create a movie club, and you pay into the movie club, that helps initial fundraising, and then you get your tickets for $4 apiece. Anyone else that wants to buy tickets would be $10 apiece. I sent a memo to council that we're working with Recreation and Seniors on a program that will allow the borough to have access to sell tickets to events. Could be to ski club, it could be to the lobster shanty trip that the seniors are taking, but it could also be used by this organization to sell movie tickets. We're going to show Aladdin tonight at 7:00 PM or Saturday afternoon matinee.
So, one of the key things is keeping in mind that when construction is done, it's, we're ready to open for basic, you know, we could do the art shows, we can do basic theater operations, but if we wanted to have a theater equity group come in, we need the sprung floor. So, we would anticipate that the group that wants to do that would lead the fundraising or come up with a funding source, just as with the movies or other things.
And wouldn't it make, wouldn't it make sense to be doing that fundraising now? Because it would be easier to put a sprung floor in as the construction is going on. It would be easier to put a projection system in before you close the walls in.
Actually, both those examples, what, what is being done already is the floor was poured to allow for a sprung floor, so that, and without, without it in place, the fundraising in place, when we cut the ribbon, it will be filled in-
So, it'll be usable?
It'll be usable with carpet over it. And the project, you know, it's a fairly open space and flexible, so things like projectors and all that can, can be done at, at any time. And more, you know, we've got a basic lighting package, but if they wanted to kick that up a notch, the power is designed to handle a greater amount of lighting in there, and the HVAC is based on lighting and occupancy, so we're ready for it.
So, we'll be reaching out to the various groups, to Glyphs, to MACA, to Playwrights, to the various organizations. I know the Chamber is interested in having the home expo there and trying to build a calendar of events around this and to start the process, and then from there, understanding what their needs are. The home expo won't need anything. The Glyphs won't need anything. The school district art show won't need anything. And, but working with those organizations and then coming back to council and saying, "Okay, Playwrights Theater wants to use it for 12 weeks a year, two six-week spans. We're proposing rental terms of this, because, you know, to help offset the electric utility costs and whatever janitorial costs that there might be," and work with them, and then we will come back to council with that. We just want to make sure that the community is aware that this, that this space is available. We are certainly open to hearing any other suggestions, and then we're going to start to work on a process to decide the calendar.
So, administration will come back with the policies and procedures, and I also gave the guideline of, we're not the first municipality to have a community space like this, and so we don't need to reinvent the wheel, so we'll use successful projects elsewhere. Pat?
So, Jim, when do we anticipate that we're going to be able to actually do events there with timeframe?
I think in the spring, Pat.
Oh, as early as April or May?
Yes.
Okay. And then the second question is parking. Is it going to primarily be street parking if you're bringing a lot of people in?
There is parking along the interior street of the facility. I know it's not considered a street, it's actually their, kind of their driveway, but there is parking there. And then, yes, Pat, it would be people hopefully coming downtown, parking, getting a bite to eat, and then walking over to the space.
And if we're going to allow a connection to the restaurant, are we also going to contemplate the ability for the restaurant to use it as a banquet space, a party space, or something else? Are we not going to consider that as a possible rental use?
I would say that, throw that in the hopper and have, have administration come back-
Depends how much they're willing to pay.
Pros and cons of that.
Thank you.
Yep. I mean, sorry, I'm sorry, the audience, and the open comment period, be able to share some thoughts related to this. Any other comments or questions from the council? Okay, thank you very much, and as I often say, more to come. All right, we'll move on to the next item, which is ordinance for hearing. Will the clerk please read the statement?
Ordinance is scheduled for hearing. Were introduced by title and passed on a first reading at the regular meeting of the council held on Monday, September 11th, 2017. Were posted and filed according to law, and copies were made available to the general public requesting same.
I'll call up ordinances for second reading. Ask the clerk to read said ordinances by title.
Ordinance 37, 2017. Ordinance of the Borough of Madison amending ordinance 49, 2013, regarding Chapter 34 of the Borough Code entitled Police Department.
I open the hearing for ordinance 37. Anyone wishing to comment, please step forward. Seeing none, I close the hearing.
Mayor, I move ordinance 37-2017.
Second.
Any council discussion? Roll call vote.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
I declare ordinance 37-2017 adopted and finally passed, and ask the clerk to publish notice thereof in the newspaper and file the ordinance in accordance with the law.
Ordinance 38, 2017. Ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $950,000 from the Water Capital Improvement Fund for the 2017 Central Avenue Water Main Replacement Project.
I open the hearing for ordinance 38. Anyone wishing to comment, please step forward. Seeing none, I close the hearing.
Mayor, I move ordinance 38-2017.
I'll second that.
Any council discussion? Roll call vote.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
I declare ordinance 38-2017 adopted and finally passed, and ask the clerk to publish notice thereof in the newspaper and file the ordinance in accordance with the law.
Ordinance 39, 2017. Ordinance of the Borough of Madison amending Chapter 155 of the Madison Borough Code entitled Sewer to clarify sewer connections.
I open the hearing for ordinance 39. Seeing none, I close the hearing.
Mayor, I move ordinance 39-2017.
I second that motion.
Any council discussion? Roll call vote.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
I declare ordinance 39-2017 adopted and finally passed, and ask the clerk to publish notice thereof in the newspaper and file the ordinance in accordance with the law.
Ordinance 40, 2017.
Ordinance 40, 2017. Ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $30,000 from the Municipal Open Space Trust Fund to install a lacrosse wall at the Madison Recreation Center.
I open the hearing for ordinance 40. Anyone wishing to comment, please step forward. Seeing none, I close the hearing.
Mayor, I move ordinance 40 dash 2017.
I second it.
Any council discussion? Roll call vote.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
I declare ordinance 39 dash 2017 adopted and finally passed, and ask the clerk to publish the notice thereof in the newspaper and file the ordinance in accordance with the law. Okay, we're now, we're on to our second of, uh, two invitations for discussion from the public. This is one, you may comment on anything, including the last presentation. Um, again, try to keep your, your comments to three minutes or less, and if you, uh, reach three minutes, I'll, uh, give you the one-minute grace period. Claudine, welcome.
Good evening. I'm Claudine Berti, 26 South Street. So, I'm sure my face and name is familiar to, um, most of you by now. I've come to the town council meeting three times in the last, uh, couple of months, uh, to ask for resolution to the daily DeFalco parking, uh, their tow truck on South Street. Since my last meeting, uh, coming to the meeting here about two weeks ago, I've been emailing each of you every day with pictures. I don't know if you've
No.
Not seeing it?
No.
Mayor Conley's seen it because he's responded to it. Um, so is, um, Councilmember Vitale, so I am sending them. But I did bring them here, pictures for the public to see. From my house.
Um, yeah, I'm sorry, no. You have to stay at the podium and, yep.
So, this vehicle that you see in that, that picture, that was, that's every day, that's been taken for the last two weeks, maybe give or take a day or so that I wasn't able to get out in time to take the pictures. Um, parks on South Street every day from about 6:00 PM to 10:00 PM. It looks like one of our neighbors is getting repossessed every day. It's an eyesore, it's ugly, it's a nuisance, it's inappropriate, it's unseemly, but it's ignored. Would this be acceptable on Noelwood? Would it be acceptable on Beverly Road? Would this be acceptable on Palmeroy or on, um, Woodland or Fairview? I don't think so. Imagine the outrage of those neighbors when they have their beautiful tree-lined neighborhoods marred by a tow truck every single day. And this has been happening since June. But it's acceptable on South Street, and I've been visited by several council members who've come knocking on my door. Um, a council candidate has come, has come to, come by our neighborhood and we talked about it. I've been canceled on three times by your traffic officer, Officer DeVali. So clearly, the town council has plans to do nothing about this, and it's been going on for months. So I'm taking this into my own hands. I'm going to be continuing to take pictures. I will be emailing those pictures to all of you, and I'll be posting them on every social media network that I'm a part of, just so that our neighbors and our residents, as well as the general public, can see how certain neighborhoods in this town are ignored and devalued, and we're letting private interests use our streets as a parking lot. So, thank you.
Thank you. Just, uh, a few updates, and, uh, as I said, thank you for your, uh, patience on this. Um, we've been going back and forth with quite a bit. We've also, the police chief has been working with, uh, DeFalco, uh, towing. We've got, uh, a representative in the back, and he's more than happy to, uh, sit down and, and talk with you. Uh, an update as of this morning is the fact that they've, he's contacted a local business, uh, to secure after-hours parking, uh, at, at the local business right on Park Avenue, and so that will take care of, uh, the agreement, from what I understand, is anytime that the service station is not open for business, so outside of normal, uh, business hours, including evenings, overnight, and weekends, they, they'll be able to park on that.
Especially that is unacceptable. That is, that's from 9:00 PM. I, I've been told about this.
Okay, and, and the other thing to keep in mind, I know you feel you're being treated differently, but the, uh, ordinances are enforced equally across the, uh, the town, and certainly not
I doubt that. I doubt very highly that if this were happening uphill, that it would be accepted. Don't tell me otherwise, because I know for a fact that this has happened in other parts of the town, and they've gotten signage that, that, from the town to, to, to disallow parts.
I'm sorry, it's not a debate, and, um, you're, I, I hear you, and I, uh,
No, you don't hear me. This is my third time
I'm sorry.
Clearly you don't hear me.
No.
You don't hear my neighbors. You don't hear people who are, who are homeowners, as well as business owners.
Your time is up, because this is not a debate back and forth.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, you, I'm sorry you feel you're being treated differently, and I, that is not the case. Anyone else wishing to comment, please step forward and state your name, your address. Welcome, Dennis.
Mr. Mayor, Council. Dennis Schreiber, 9 Amelia Court. I have to say, I thought that presentation from Jim was great. I'm happy to see that we're going to make a, uh, great utilization of, of the building that's going in. Um, but I do have a question, a couple of questions, and they're not too controversial. Uh, the revenue stream from usage, is that going to be, Jim, do you anticipate it's going to be constant, or is it just going to be sporadic? My question is, will the revenue streams be adequate enough to cover maintenance of the building and eventually cover renovations?
Yeah, and Dennis, you wanna, we'll go on, we'll capture, so, just so we'll answer the questions at the end.
Okay, that's fine.
Yep.
But I think it's a great idea. I hope we have sufficient parking, and I look forward to seeing what it looks like.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jim, you want to address that question, please?
Uh, that's our goal, is to make sure that we have enough, uh, opportunities for revenue generation, but also really focus on the, um, economic, uh, development benefits, so we don't want to always have it be a catering hall for the restaurant next door, for the, for the, for the money from the catering hall, when we really want to be able to open it up for cultural and arts opportunities as well.
And to reinforce, um, you know, I've, I've said it before, that right up front, as far as successful downtowns are, people living in downtown and events that bring people downtown, so this, this site provides both. Anyone else wishing to be heard? Welcome back.
And I wanted to comment also on that community space and on the whole development. So, again, that was a, a, a good, uh, vision that the, that the council had, and, uh, some of the planners and the people on the planning board, when they negotiated for the, the space to be developed and to keep something good for the, uh, for the community. So it sounds like it has so many opportunities, which is great, so I, I hope that the public realizes that there was a big effort made by the, the planning board and by all of you guys, and the school board was involved too, right, Pat? And Lisa, for a while? So, and, and the, and the school realized a nice, um, return on the property, the sale of the property.
So, so, but I, and this isn't necessarily specifically targeted towards a community center, but I wanted to know if the borough's making a projection yet for the, the pilotax revenue that we are gonna realize once the property is, uh, finished and stabilized with renters and the resale, and the sales of the condos happen?
And Jim will can address that as you finish up your comments, if you have any other questions or comments.
Okay, well, so then my other question leading into that was just, when we do realize what the tax revenue be, that will give maybe a little, a little relief to the taxpayers, because it should be significant annual revenue, I'm hoping. But I, I know what it was originally estimated at, but I'm expecting that it's gonna be even more, and you probably have been thinking about it too, because you're, you're working on your budget for next year, right, Jimmy? Yeah, help you a little bit.
Okay, any ideas? So, uh, Well, just to, to set the stage for Jim, that the, um, I can, right off the top of my head, I can tell you the taxes that were generated on that property five years ago, and that was zero.
Right.
So, with that.
So it's gonna go from zero, we think, to a, a total revenue generation of at least $600,000, of which one-third will go back to the Board of Education, which was part of the agreement. Um, it will, uh, right now, we're projecting it to be the second highest taxpayer or tax ratable. Um, it may be higher, given, um, the rents that they're looking to seek and, uh, the condo sale prices they're looking to get. So, higher is, is good.
Yeah, that's fantastic. Thanks, Jim.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to comment?
Ron Hendrickson, again. Um, Jim, thanks for the presentation. I think it's, it's exciting to see, um, community space being developed in, in Madison, and I think we all know the tension between developing space and, and keeping open space, so I think that goes without saying. Um, I guess I have two comments. One is, I'm really, really excited that Madison is gonna put units and rates on the electric bill. That thoroughly delights me. I think I've been here for about three or four times over the last two years, highlighting the importance of that, and how it sends a message to our kids about STEM, that you're actually doing our utility bill. I want to applaud you for that. And perhaps, yeah, just, that's fantastic. And the other question, um, I have is, as I talk to people, there, there's a perception, and maybe you can correct that here at this meeting, that there's actually some underground parking at this development that's gonna be available for town, town people to use. So, maybe comment on that. And then another question that people have is, um, how, how could a restaurant or this space be developed without the need for off-street parking? Or maybe it's that driveway parking that's went into development. So maybe you could comment on those two things, please.
Thank you. Thank you, Ron. Try to, uh, address all those, as this one through the planning board. The, um, the, the parking on-site, if you look at, um, look up the drive, there's a building to the left, building on the right, both of those have ground-level parking, basically first-floor parking, and then straight ahead is, are the condos. There's two levels, because that's built into the hill, that are underneath there. One of the things, we did make a request to them, because this is not officially a transit village, but we anticipate that it'll be, people use, take advantage of the train, and the people that will choose to live here may not have the typical number of cars per unit, that to monitor the, the usage, and if there is surplus parking, that, you know, maybe we could make it available for the community, additional, uh, commuter, uh, parking. So that, that, that was, uh, put into the resolution at the planning board. Um, the, uh, the restaurant is, you know, it was part of the whole, uh, presentation as far as, you know, businesses on-site, and so you need the parking for your residents, you need parking for the restaurant, and so that was considered. And there's also still the, King's Road is available, we've only lost, we'll, we'll have lost a few spots on King's Road with that development, and if anyone has noticed King's Road, even at the height of the December shopping season, that section of King's Road often has been empty, especially dinnertime. That'll get us over the other side of that big wall that, uh, is called the railroad, of getting people parking on both sides and maybe get it utilized more. So, those are the things that we'll all put in discussion. Anyone else wishing to be heard? Welcome, Tom.
Thank you, Mayor. Tom Abruzzo, 52 Maple Avenue, Madison. I'm here to discuss the, uh, once again, the welcoming community resolution. Um, given some of the, uh, confusing remarks, actually from you, the mayor, at the August Borough Council meeting, um, regarding the resolution, as well as, uh, some other uninformed statements that I've read about in the Madison Eagle over the past, uh, month or so, I thought it was time that I provide residents of Madison a full account of what was discussed in the June 1st closed-door invitation-only meeting between the mayor, uh, and Borough Attorney Matthew Giacobi, as well as, uh, 12 concerned residents, including myself, uh, regarding that resolution. Not sure why this was, um, a closed-door meeting, um, you have to check with the mayor on that. Um, first, uh, first thing that was uncovered, which is kind of known, the mayor originally had the idea for the resolution, and he copied, uh, the one that was adopted by Maplewood as a template. The mayor and council did not move, remove more controversial sanctuary city language from Maplewood's version. That language was removed by our police chief. So it was mentioned to the mayor at the meeting, for which he did not have a response, that the council would have adopted Maplewood's version without knowing the consequences of the resolution. I find that kind of interesting. Prior to the June 1st meeting, in a series of emails between myself, the mayor, and Borough Administrator, Cody, it was asked what was the legal basis used by Mr. Giacobi to determine that the resolution would not designate Madison as a sanctuary city. The response by Mr. Cody, which was confirmed at the meeting on June 1st, was that Mr., the response of Mr. Cody, that, uh, that was confirmed at the meeting, was that Mr. Giacobi orally opined prior to the, uh, February adoption of the resolution, that it was not in contravention of any federal, state, or local statute, regulation, or directive. Mr. Cody's explanation further went on to cite federal legal cases about the official definition of what constitutes a sanctuary city, which were not issued until April 2017, two months after the adoption of the resolution. Following the June 1st meeting, Madison actually revised its published FAQs regarding the resolution to include the legal cases from the April 2000s. Mr. Giacobi provided no response to the question posed on June 1st as to how he could have provided a favorable legal opinion in February to the adoption of the resolution, since he had no legal opinion from which to cite. We assume that is why he only orally opined on the original resolution. Resident attorneys who were at the meeting expressed concern regarding Madison's compliance with the 8 USC 1621, which limits services that the state or municipality can provide to illegal aliens. The statute lists those services which illegal aliens are ineligible to receive. The mayor and Borough Attorney responded, only services provided to illegal aliens are the services permitted under 1621, like emergency services for police, fire, ambulance corps, and K to 12 public education. So the resident attorneys concluded, as written, the resolution was in direct conflict with, conflict with the requirements of 1621. Um, mayor and, and Mr. Giacobi had no comment to that statement. Most importantly from our meeting, residents questioned how the council could legally
And, uh, one minute, Tom.
Yep, could legally construct the resolution as a resolution instead of as an ordinance. The residents made the point, which was not disputed, that a municipal ordinance differs from a resolution. New Jersey law permits a municipality to act via a resolution only where a statutory provision has provided for action by a resolution. Otherwise, all actions are required to be an ordinance. This is to protect the rights of municipal residents, because unlike a resolution, which can be passed in one meeting without opportunity for public comment, an ordinance requires a multi-step process with ample opportunities for public review and comment. That did not happen in this case. Since he adopted the resolution, specifically stipulated additional costs and burdens on municipal employees, such as the monitoring efforts of the federal government to withhold funds in Provision 7 and 8, or additional employee training in Provision 5, it appears, as currently written, this council, the council would need to repeal the current resolution, would need to change it to an ordinance. Um, this, such was actually done in early August 2017. The City of Denver, Colorado, adopted an effective rule to protect its local illegal immigrants. However,
Time's up, okay?
Uh, unfortunately, I have more, but I'll give that to the Madison Eagle, and they can do what they want.
Appreciate it.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Tom. Uh, Matt, if you want to, uh, share some, uh, feedback on the, uh, comments there, anything that, up?
Well, uh, first, um, my first memo to you, uh, when I was asked about it, uh, does, was February the 2nd. Um, so, and every memo I've given to you, and all the opinions have been in writing, um, what I explained and what I say, first off, a resolution, uh, lives for one year. The reason ordinances have a first and second reading is they become the equivalent of the, the code and law of the Borough of Madison. A resolution lives year to year, and they, they don't, they don't transpire from one year to the, the next. This isn't a, a document that, um, the police rely upon to enforce a law. This is more of a statement. For example, municipalities pass resolutions all the time, recognizing people, uh, having certain, um, recognition for a cause for a month, et cetera. As we explained at that meeting, um, the law that, that you've been citing, or everyone's been citing, is 8 USC 1621, uh, we said that we have to comply with all federal laws. The, this Borough Council is duty-bound, as is the Police Department, as is the county, as is the state, to comply with federal law. is the county, as is the state, to comply with federal law. There are myriad federal laws that we comply with, and one of them is 8 USC 1621. So the resolution in no way obviates our requirements under 8 USC 1621, in terms of what our duties are under the federal government. The issue is, that came up, was whether or not this constituted a sanctuary city. In my legal opinion at the time is, it does not. And we looked at all the different resolutions that have been passed at, around that time, in various cities around the country, of what constituted sanctuary cities, et cetera. And if you look, ultimately, I think that our advice was correct, because when we got the directives later on in April from the federal government, it was clear that what was passed, the welcoming resolution, did not constitute a sanctuary city. So our position is that, I did speak to a gentleman who's, I'm understanding, at the meeting. He wants to get together with me in the next several weeks to make some suggestions. I said, I'm glad to get together with him, and he's going to reach out to me. I'm on, I'm conducting a trial this week, but next week, we're going to get together, and he's going to share with me some of the suggestions. He did email me some suggestions, and I pointed out to him, some of the changes that were recommended would be extremely problematic, I think, for the Borough of Madison residents, whether you like this resolution or not. And so he and I agreed that we will have a discussion about some of the recommendations. He had one, two, three, four recommendations, and two of them, I think, are somewhat problematic. As I told him, two of the recommendations, he said, would be to cite USC 1621 or other applicable laws. As I explained, we have to comply with USC 1621 and all other applicable laws. But when I get together with him in the next several weeks, I'll report back to you, Mayor, and let you know, you know, what, what was discussed.
Thank you very much. And to be clear on one statement there, the, related to that this council was ready to pass this welcoming resolution without, and thankfully, I don't know the exact words, but it was, but with the intervention, the police chief, it was, it was changed. What I did was, I did share the Maplewood resolution with the council as a concept. At the same time, I shared it with the attorney to get his input, and I shared it with the police chief. So the resolution that you saw was done as a team effort with our legal team and the input from the police. So, so don't say that it was changed only by intervention of the chief. That is very unfair, and I'm very disappointed I would even hear that. Anyone else wishing to be heard, please step forward. Adam? Adam coming up behind you. Kathy Adams coming up behind you there.
My name is Adam Remph. I represent the Falcos in the ongoing issue with our truck on South Street. I just want to say, we have been working closely with the Police Department and the Chief of Police to correct this issue and find other places to park the trucks. We've come up with many different ideas that didn't pan out. Like the mayor said today, we had a brief view. The owner of the Exxon, Dan Mianos, will let us park the truck there. It's not at 9 o'clock. It's starting at 7:00 p.m. So the truck would be there for maybe an hour while our driver had dinner with his family, then would move the truck when their automotive shop closed down. So we're doing everything in our power to make everyone in that neighborhood happy, you know, and not have an eyesore. He is parking it in front of his house, from my understanding, and then moves it into his driveway. I understand people have an issue with that. So we're doing everything in our power to correct this issue. We've worked within, in this community for over 30, 40 years, when my dad started the company. So we don't want people unhappy with us. We don't want people to think our truck's an eyesore, or that we're problematic. So anything we can do, we will do, and we're trying to do. So we're willing to work with anybody.
Thank you for the update.
Thank you, guys.
Kathy?
Kathy Daly, West End Avenue. I just want to attest that I was at the meeting that Tom Abruzzo was discussing, and everything that he recalled from that meeting was also my recollection. So that's the first thing I wanted to state to everybody. And then the other thing I wanted to mention is the, the meeting, the community meeting on April 3rd. I know the agenda for that meeting originally was to put actions into words and make the resolution, I assume, start to create a framework for developing ordinances from that resolution. I'm assuming that that's what the goal was. I don't know if that's really what it was, but that was how I interpreted it anyway. But the meeting that actually took place that day, I think, would have been much more helpful for everybody, and probably would have saved this particular group, the council, a lot of, a lot of disruptive heartache and, and agita over the resolution, had that community conversation happened earlier. And perhaps the resolution would have been a different product in the end than the one it wound up being. That's the comment that I wanted to make. So, thank you.
Thank you. Just a clarification on the actions, it was not intended to be ordinances or anything, but some of the suggestions that came out from that meeting, for example, were get to know your neighbor. So the idea was thrown out there of having potluck dinners, and we heard examples of some neighborhoods that had, hosted pot-like, potluck dinners, and they got to know each other. Another one was to create a welcome wagon group, and, you know, a comparable welcome wagon group. And so there's a group of volunteers on their own, working on that concept of how do you relay the, the resources to newcomers in the town, no matter who you are. So those were the, that was the goal of that group. Chris?
Christine Shore, Shady Lawn Drive. I think that I have been to, if not all, most of the meetings where the welcoming resolution has been discussed. Oh, sure. Do I sound different now?
Yeah.
Okay. And in all that time, it has been my experience that every single point has been clearly made and clearly defended. And every single time I hear objections to it, it's a repetition of incorrect information suggesting that, on the one hand, if you copy the Maplewood proclamation, there's something wrong with that, but the way to correct it is to copy the one that Denver passed. This makes no sense to me. The people who are opposed it certainly are residents of Madison, but so am I, and so are the people who support this. And generalizing to say that illegal residents are a big problem in this town is nonsense. We don't have a big immigrant population generally, and they are welcome. We're all immigrants. I strongly support this. I'm speaking for my neighbors who support this, and for a lot of my friends who support this. It was done democratically. It was done with the participation of the council, of the mayor, of the police chief, of lawyers. It has passed every single legal examination. I'm amazed that we're still talking about it. It was a good thing to do, in my view, and I thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to be heard? Seeing none, I close this part of the meeting. Thank you all for your comments. We move on to, set our introduction ordinances.
Ordinance is scheduled for first reading. Have a hearing date set for Wednesday, October 11th, 2017. All will be published in the Madison Eagle, posted on the bulletin board, made available to members of the public requesting copies.
I call up Ordinance 41 for first reading, and ask the Borough Clerk to read said ordinance by title.
Ordinance 41, 2017. Ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $60,000 from the Electric Capital Improvement Fund for the purchase of electric meters with radio read technology.
Mayor, I move Ordinance 41-2017.
I second that. Any council discussion?
I just want to point out that I understand that the purchase of these meters is so we can meter the King's Road development for reading without having to use pen and paper.
Right. So that's kind of the first, since we have a great opportunity to first...
First opportunity.
Any other comments? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Consent agenda resolutions. Will the clerk please read a statement?
Consent agenda resolutions will be enacted with a single motion. Any resolution requiring expenditure is supported by a certification of availability of funds. Any resolution requiring discussion will be removed from the consent agenda. All resolutions will be reflected in full in the minutes.
Mayor, I move consent agenda resolution R. 251-2017 through R. 256-2017.
Second.
Any discussion or any that need to be pulled? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
No unfinished business. Approval vouchers.
Right here. Okay. Current fund, $3,776,062.69. The general capital fund, $582,962.2. Electric capital operating, $938,114.57. Electric capital fund, $69,138. Water operating fund, $44,609.68. Water capital fund, $41,566.15. And the trust, $15,708.72. Total is
Mayor, I move the approval of the vouchers.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And on to new business. I'd like to make the following governing body appointment to the Madison Housing Authority Board of Commissioners, appointing Jeffrey Smith, 2016 Hill Road, its commissioner effective September 25, 2017, for an expirable five-year term through August 10, 2020, 2022.
Mr. Mayor, I move the appointment.
I second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Before I close the meeting, I'd like to ask people to reflect on the fact that today is the 60th anniversary of the Selma 9, the integration of the Selma's school, Selma school system. Back then, it was controversial. It's still controversial today. And with that, I move readjourn.
Favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. You all.